All right. Good evening, everyone. It is November 21st. It's 4:00 PM and we will begin our Board of Commissioners meeting here in Curry County. On the phone or Zoom, we have Commissioner Trost. He's with Commissioner-elect Hollinger. They're coming back from AOC, trying to beat the storm. And then we also have Finance Director Kena Wolf. So we'll call the meeting to order and please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is amendment and approval of the agenda. And we have a couple of things that I know we need to change. One is Kylie is here and she's got some time commitments. So I'd like to move elected official comments. I'd like to move that next, actually.
Before the presentation?
Before the presentation.
Is it anything that's sensitive? Does it require a vote?
It does not require a vote, but she's got some time constraints. So she's asked to go first.
Okay.
And then, let me move through this. And then on consent agenda under C. Kena, my understanding on number C, 5C, is that we still have some paperwork or some other things that need to be completed by HR. Is that correct?
Correct. Per county board order and actually two separate board orders. We have an order that says HR has to be present during all aspects or involved in all aspects of the hire. And HR was not involved with any of the interview processes for the hire of the sheriff's executive assistant. So I did email the sheriff and let him know what we needed to do in order to complete this process. And that's where we stand.
Okay. Okay, so we can pull that until the process is complete and we've complied with the orders and we can add it on the next one.
Thank you.
We're pulling C.
So we'll pull C. Any other amendments?
I have none.
Jay, do you have any?
No, sir.
All right. Then is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
All right, I'll second it. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And yes. Motion passes three to zero. So we will go to elected official comments. Kylie, it's your time.
Hi, I'm Kylie Wagner, assessor and tax collector. And I wanted to give an update since we made it through tax time. First of all, I want to start by thanking my staff. They did a great job. I want to thank all of them, but specifically Tracy, Wendy, and Lauren. They really put in extra time, extra effort, learning our new software system. This is the first year that we have turned the tax roll in the new system. We not only did that, but we did it down one whole FTE. We are currently at a 78% collection rate of the roughly $34 million that we levied. To put that into perspective, at the end of the year, we turn in a summary of our tax collection and we turn that into Department of Revenue in July and we were at a 97% rate. So we're doing pretty good with two more, more than pretty good. We're doing great considering we have two more trimesters to collect on. So I wanted to point that out. We took a lot of heat this year on our hours. I just want to talk a little bit about that. I tried to explain that we don't have the luxury of putting our other tasks and responsibilities off until the taxes are collected. We have to continue to provide those services and collect taxes at the same time. We did change our hours to 10 to 2, but from 6:30 in the morning till 10:00, we have other job duties to perform. We're doing appraisals, we're pulling reports for the title companies, just doing other things. Then from 2:00 to close, we're balancing. On Friday, the 15th, we took in $6.7 million. We had to post that, balance that, and turn it over to the treasurer in time to get it to the bank. That's huge. That's more than most people, I think, could do in an hour. I don't know, that sounds horrible.
Is that more than normal?
Well, yeah, that is. That's, I think that's a record. We can't tell because we can't get into the other system, but yeah, that's a record. We can't do that with 10 people standing in front of you demanding to pay. And that happened a lot. We don't go home at 2:00. I think the public thinks we go home at 2:00. We don't. We're trying to balance millions of dollars to the penny and counting cash over and over. I feel the need to stand here and defend myself because we had multiple colorful messages on the answering machine of people telling us that they hope we're enjoying our time on the golf course, our banker's hours, and that we're typical government employees. This is frustrating, I think, because we know how hard we are working and we are still there. It just cannot be done up until 5:00 o'clock. In my opinion, I think this is the first time that the public has actually felt the squeeze of the budget cuts. They are used to getting something that they have always gotten in the past. We lost an employee and now they're feeling it. I'm here to actually just thank my staff, but I also felt like I had to defend myself because I had some people very, very angry. I mean, beating on the door till I opened it and then saying some things about what we were doing and not doing. And that's where we are, so.
Well, some of them got a hold of me, too.
Good. And actually, a couple of times, they said they were going to go lodge a complaint. I said, please do. I mean, I'm encouraging you to do so.
Yeah.
But I think that we did an excellent job and my staff should be recognized.
Well, I'd also like to point out that the budget cuts last year affected all the departments. And this is just an example of, yeah, it affects them at different levels. And that's why, you know, I think that when you're looking at a funding solution, it ought to address, it ought to address the other essential departments that perform these services. I get it. I, you know, I ran into all kinds of people that wanted to be paying their taxes, too. And it's, the reality is, there's just not the staffing to do it. And they are here early and they leave late. I'm here to tell you. And they're pretty cranky by the time they leave, but they, you know, they got a lot of work to do.
You know, along the lines of what you're, of this topic, Kylie, I think it's a really, because of where we are financially as a county, I think this is a really good time for everybody who paid their taxes to really look at where their taxes are going. To look at the bill that you sent out, it's itemized. It tells you where the, how their money is distributed. And I can tell you with mine, being over $3,000, only $180 went to the general fund out of all that money. And I think it's really important for the public to recognize, that's what we have to work off of. That's it. And the rest of the money went to the other districts that I pay into. And it's not a lot of money when you think about that percentage. And we've been, we've been trying to educate the community. We've been trying to help people understand that. But if you'll just take a few minutes and look at that tax bill and look at where your money goes, I think you'll have a better understanding of why we're in the situation we're in.
You're hired.
Kylie, I would like-
Behind the door.
Kylie, I would also like to thank your team for balancing to the penny. That makes it really easy on Nick and the Finance Department. So we appreciate that.
Thank you, Kena. Thank you.
Thanks, Kylie.
Yeah, I'd also like to just say a couple of things, too. You know, Kylie, I really, I understand it was really tough and the level of work you guys put in and just your whole team. I saw your whole team running around all the time, trying to get things squared away. And I did, you know, a few people at the door, you know, trying to, you know, you showed them the Dropbox. But maybe in the future, you know, in preparation for next year, we can work together, get out a press release, not necessarily that it'll inform everyone, but maybe it'll help reduce some of those phone calls that were received in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking about some signage, too, that might help. But maybe a press release and associated with the signage, I think that would help, for sure.
So, good work to the tax and assessment team.
Yep.
Thanks, guys.
Yep. Because the reality is, we are going to turn the corner on the year and ramp up right into budget again. And things didn't get any better, did they?
No.
No, they sure didn't. Okay. Next up in the agenda is presentation. So I don't see Chris or Joe here.
Right. My name's Georgia Cockerham. And former Commissioner Chris Posh was to make this presentation. He could not be here today due to an urgent family need and he asked that I speak for him. A BOC workshop was held recently for the purpose of discussing a solution to the dangerous absence of safety in Curry County. And at that workshop, Mr. Posh and Mr. Wilson presented the idea of a law enforcement service district specifically for the purpose of funding the sheriff's office and putting more patrol deputies on the road. You, the commissioners, and Mr. Fitzgerald recommended a levy rather than service district be the mechanism to produce funding for once again providing safety to all Curry County citizens. Your recommendation was based upon the reduced cost of a levy to that of a service district. Mr. Posh and Mr. Wilson listened to your suggestion and agreed that a law enforcement levy be the vehicle for raising funds to provide a much improved level of safety to all of our citizens. The two gentlemen stated that they would have the state required document ready today for your approval. Earlier this afternoon, I emailed to each of you the SEL 805 Notice of Measure Election. This is the same document, that being the SEL 805, that you completed for the levy you placed on last May's ballot. For the benefit of the public, I will read both the question and the summary. The question, should the county levy $1.12 per thousand of assessed property value July 25 through, excuse me, July 2025 through 2032 to fund patrol and dispatch divisions of sheriff's office? The measure may cause property taxes to increase more than 3%. And the summary is, due to the state of county finances, the sheriff's office staff has been greatly reduced, requiring three or fewer deputies to patrol the roads of the county 100 miles north to south, resulting in a dangerous reduction of safety to citizens and a precarious dispatch situation. Passage of this law enforcement levy for $1.12 per thousand of assessed property value, estimated to initially raise $4,280,920 annually, will provide an additional eight patrol deputies and two dispatch staff. Upon passage of the levy, a five-member review board comprised of Curry County citizens will be appointed to oversee the use of the levy funds and ensure that they are spent in accordance with the levy for patrol and dispatch, resulting in improved public safety. The estimated cost for this measure is an estimate only based on the best information available from the county assessor at the time of the estimate and may reflect the impact of early payment discounts compression and the collection rate. The question today is, will you support us with this effort to let the citizens of Curry County decide on whether they will support dispatch and more deputies on the road with this levy?
So a couple of things that I want to point out. I did get your email, Georgia. I got it at 2:16. So I did, I did read it, but I didn't get a chance to get in depth with it or, I know that you can only have so many words on it. I don't know what the word count is. I know there's some math in it. I don't know, I don't know if that's been verified by Kena. Well, she didn't get it. I forwarded it to her, but she didn't have it. So there's a lot of questions about that still because we didn't have it. And also, I just want to point out, when we have a presentation or a BOC meeting, it's really important that those documents get submitted ahead of time so that the public can have an opportunity to see them, review them. It is a public document, so it should be part of the package. And I realize you guys have been working in a difficult environment to produce all that stuff, but we do have to adhere to those rules and standards. So just keep that in mind as we, because I'm sure we're going to be talking and discussing this more. So keep those things in mind. Comments? Jay, John?
I think it sounds good. We kind of hashed this out at the last workshop. I know we have to do something and I could support this.
I just don't know-
If it passes, you know, the-
Yeah, I just don't know, I don't know that it meets. There's another form that goes with that also.
Wait, I had a ques-
It's an SEL form that goes with that. There's actually two forms.
Maybe that's the 801, which I can also-
Yeah, I don't know.
I do appreciate your comments and I want to apologize for not getting this out to you sooner. Two things I'd like to say. First of all, Budget Committee Member Dan Bratton, I've spoken with him and he absolutely supports this 100%. Second thing I want to mention, that Commissioner Herzog pointed out to me, the last two and a half sentences, the estimated tax cost for this measure is an estimate only based on the best information available from the assessor. That is off of the, was left off of the sheet. So I will, when I go home this evening, make sure that's back on there.
But it's on your email.
It is on my email, but it's-
But it just doesn't print, yeah.
The printer did not print it. It left the boilerplate language, the last sentence and a half. I'd also like to say, relative to this form, and I understand you wanting to take a better look at it, it is less than the 175 words required in the summary. I will tell you now that the question is a little more than 20 words, but in reading your SEL 805 for the levy last May, it was also over 20 words. So I think I still kept it less than what the commissioner's levy was.
Yeah, and I just, I can't remember off the top of my head what the, what the standard was that had to be followed there. I don't remember what that is. So I'd have to go back and figure that out. Jay, you had a comment?
Just a question in terms of, it's more of a content question for Ms. Cockerham. So in here, it says that this will provide an additional eight patrol deputies and two dispatch staff. And so one of the questions that I had was, in the original packet that we got, it was to identify, it was in totals and it said eight deputies total. I think it was two sergeants, eight deputies, one lieutenant, one sheriff, and 10 dispatch. So I guess my question is, and it was including Marines, so that would be the fourth deputy of our current budgeted. So is it eight additional on top of the four or is it four additional on top of the four to equal eight?
It is eight additional. And Jeremy, would you like to come up and respond? Okay. I can tell you that the total with this, if this levy passes, it is eight additional.
Eight additional, not eight, not eight in total.
So this will allow for a total, if the levy passes, a total of 14 personnel in the Criminal Civil Division Patrol and 10 personnel in Communications Division Dispatch.
Right. So currently in Criminal Civ Patrol, we have three deputies, four deputies, including the Marine deputy. So four deputies, two sergeants, one lieutenant, one sheriff. What does that add to?
This is in reference specifically to patrol. Patrol and dispatch.
Yeah, no, patrol, civil, and criminal, I believe, is the, is the total budget line.
Yes.
And I believe in the initial proposed presentation, it included a civil deputy, an admin assistant, a sheriff, eight patrol deputies, two lieutenants, or sorry, two sergeants, one lieutenant, which I think is at your 14 number. And I guess what I'm getting at is our current, where we currently stand is one sheriff, one lieutenant, two sergeants, four deputies that include Marine, one admin assistant, and one in civil. So if you add up, I don't believe it's a total of eight additional positions from what is currently budgeted. So just, it's just content related. I just want to make sure that they were accurate in what we're putting out there.
I would agree with that because I do know that when Lieutenant Crone did his presentation, they included Marine and search and rescue in there, which are a separate budget line. So we do need to be specific on how we're going to do this.
And then another question I have, Georgia, is, so when we were talking about, when you guys did your first presentation, you were talking about the special service district. The amount was $1.12, same amount. But then there's less cost because you don't have the administrative cost. So couldn't we get the $1.12 down to a lower amount with a levy?
My understanding is not, we cannot do that and still have eight more patrol deputies and four in dispatch. But I will defer that question to Lieutenant Crone.
Mr. Alcorn, can you repeat your question, please?
So in the initial presentation that you guys did, the amount was $1.12, right? And when we, in our discussion, we pointed out that the special service district has administrative costs that come with that, which would come out of that amount. So because you're now talking about a levy, then those administrative costs were gone. So couldn't the amount of $1.12 be reduced to a lower amount to accomplish the necessary goal?
So the $1.12 amount accounts for the current IGS with admin services. So that's $23,000 and some change per person per year. So that's how we got to that number.
So then was the number wrong in the first presentation?
The number was correct, assuming that we would, with the service district, that we would contract with the same, at the same rate-
Okay.
-with the county as we currently do for those indirect costs.
But there were additional, there were actually additional costs for that, so that was, so it wasn't correct.
Right. So at that point, when we learned that, that number was not correct. That number should have been higher.
Okay.
The number today is correct based on the current bud, the current amount that the sheriff's office pays per person per year.
Okay, because, because I'm just recalling that conversation. I remember Jay did some math up here and I think he had it at like 90 cents or something.
I didn't get to see the math, so I'm-
Do you remember that, Jay?
Correct. That was, that was identifying if we continued our current dispatch budget as it is in our current, in our current, if we continue to pay our dispatch budget, what that would look like excluding that from the initial ask.
So that, the 90 cents or whatever that number was, was removing $1.2 million from the ask, leaving-
That, that is accurate.
Okay. So it just seems like there's some more work that needs to be done on this. I think we're getting pretty close and I appreciate all the, all the work that you guys have put into it. And I want to support something, but I want it to be, I want it to be accurate, too. And, and, and so I think there's still some work that needs to be, to be done on it.
So may I ask Commissioner Alcorn, then specifically, what it is that you still want to see, what it is that, that you don't have here? Because we use the same format, again, that you're familiar with-
Right.
-the same form that you had your levy on. So what is it that you still need from us?
Right. I want to see, I want to see the exact language that's going to go on there. I want to make sure that conforms with the requirements that the state has. I want Shelley's stamp of approval on it. And I'd also like to make sure there's no other forms that need to be completed. I think there's one other one. I'd like to see what that looks like. I'd like Kena to check the math on it to make sure that we can't get this, this $1.12 number down a little bit lower and, and see if that's a possibility. Because I think if we can get that number down under a dollar, it may have a really big impact. So I'd like to, I'd like to refine that a little bit. And I'd almost, I'm not sure who's working on this. I'm not sure who's involved in this process, but it would seem like we could work together and somebody from the county could be involved in it to, to help streamline and facilitate it to make sure that every, all of the requirements are met. It seems like you're doing everything independently and then bringing it to us and then there's some, still some stuff that needs to be done. It would be nice if we could come together and work on this as a group.
Well, I think that regarding the language on the, you know, for the ballot title, that's, we get it, right? So it's, I mean, I don't think, I don't think anything else needs to be done on that. We can, we can, I can fine tune it, whatever we have to do to make it acceptable to Shelley. So the message is clear on that. I think, I'm, I'm, I'm not confident, based on what I've seen over the last three meetings. I, so I want, I want, I mean, I really want Kena to go through all that and find out. And I, and I want to, did we, so we're not doing SAR now? It was added? Are, is SAR part of this? SAR and, SAR and, and what was the other one? Marine, yeah. Is that, that's part of this or not?
So what we did with this number is we included the general fund ask already for all of the patrol and civil, or sorry, the patrol, the Criminal Civil Division, that includes the road fund allocation. We included the general fund ask of the search and rescue one because that's where one of the sergeants comes in. He's a search and rescue sergeant, so most of his salary comes out of that.
Which one, that's, that's-
Sergeant Gray.
Okay.
And then we asked for the $30,000 in Marine material and services because that's materials and services that come out of the general fund already. And we know that as long as that deputy's doing the Marine services, the Marine Division, or the State Marine Board covers his salary and then some, so you're working out.
Oh, so it's just the materials? Okay, okay. All right, that clarifies-
As far as the question about the sheriff's salary, that is divided up between six divisions. So I think the sheriff's salary is like 23 or 25% out of criminal and civil. The jails pays 25, 30% of his salary and it just kind of trickles down. So really, his salary comes out of all the divisions. So probably 50% of his salary is being asked with this levy.
Did you, did you say that, you said that there's, that you're including, so the money that was coming out of road funds is now being taken by this?
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right.
So this would completely take away any general fund ask to provide this service, which is all of the patrol and civil, the dispatch, the search and rescue side, the Marine side.
So real quick, Lieutenant Crone, while I got you there.
Sure.
So currently in civil, crim, patrol, as a total, we have 10 FTEs. That includes the sheriff, okay? Three deputies, a Marine, admin assistant, civil, two sergeants, one lieutenant, one sheriff. And so you're, what I was just told by Ms. Cockerham is this would be 14 total in civil, crim, patrol, I believe. So is it, is, is my number, is this a four additional deputies?
So what this will cover is the admin assistant, the chief civil deputy, two sergeants in total, that does not include the search and rescue sergeant because that's part of-
Oh, so that's, okay, so, so search and res-
An additional sergeant.
Got it. So that, okay, so I was confused because I thought that was in, I thought that was just included. I thought we just discussed that, so.
That's the different line item for the search and-
Okay, so, so one additional sergeant?
Yes, one additional sergeant and five additional patrol deputies to a total of eight, as well as a lieutenant.
Okay, so six, basically six additional positions. Okay, so six total addition, in there and then two additional, so eight total additional positions if you include the dispatch and the five patrol deputies and one additional sergeant?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
Am I math wrong now?
Well, in, in what I read was eight additional deputies and two in dispatch. So that's 10, right?
No, but it's, but it, no, it's eight total deputies and we already have three, so it's five additional deputies.
Which would give-
Because we already have three budgeted.
So-
I thought it said eight additional.
So here's my point. It's confusing and I want, I want the Finance Director to tell me exactly what it is.
And so I'm the one working on the numbers. If the Finance Director would like to reach out to me, we can discuss and we can fine tune these numbers. I'm in my office. I'm in my office these days and I'm available.
Yeah. I, I, I just, I, I want to know exactly what, because it is, it is confusing. And I don't want to assume anything.
This isn't confusing to me. It says we'll provide an additional eight patrol deputies.
So Lieutenant Crone.
And two dispatch.
But what if it doesn't?
Well, yeah.
That's the point, that's the point I'm trying to make.
I got you. The, the money has to cover the.
Right.
Clean up the language.
So that's ten people.
We can clean up the language on it.
Okay.
So yeah, Lieutenant Crone, if you could send me an email, um, showing that your standard positions are and then what this addition or what the ask would be with this funding, um, so that way I can, I can pull up the numbers.
So just real, just real quick, so I can confirm, Lieutenant Crone is, is, is up there. This, this, this levy will provide for our current level of staffing plus two additional dispatchers, five additional road deputies and one sergeant. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not eight additional deputies. So we need to just, yeah, clean up some of that so that we're being extremely transparent. The reality is, is I guess why I'm, I'm trying to get to the, uh, to the actuals is because we're going to have, I, I, I mean, we got one shot at it. And, and we want to make sure that, that, you know, those questions are answered before they are asked, essentially. So I guess now's our chance to do that.
So can.
Before they're, before they're asked by the public, we may have a pamphlet in front of them, I guess. My, my, my point.
So can we, can we do this? Can we take this time to clean it up? Confirm the numbers and then we'll put another presentation on the next meeting?
I, I don't know that it needs to be a presentation. It maybe just need to be a board action at that point.
Discussion action.
Uh, I, I want to see it.
Cause it's a quick turnaround with the, the late meeting in November. So we meet Tuesday after next, or Wednesday after next.
I thought we had till February to get this done.
Well, I mean, just for the next meeting, if we.
Right. I mean, I, this is time sensitive, of course, but we have till February to complete everything, right?
So Commissioner Alcorn, I'd like to respond to you.
Sure.
Um, first of all, you suggested, why were we doing this on our own? We were the ones that brought up the workshop in order to get together and we did get together. And we, um, took the advice of, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald and the board and changed this from the idea of a service district to a levy and agree.
Right.
For the reasons that you provided.
I, I guess.
And then put this information together. But, but you're now suggesting that maybe we come back at the next meeting. So what I'm going to suggest, and this is in response to your concern as to why we're trying to do this on our own, is let us get together for a workshop, um, just as soon as we can, maybe Monday, Tuesday.
Sure.
Thanksgiving's Thursday. We don't, we probably want to leave Wednesday and Thursday out. Tomorrow, Monday or Tuesday, if we can have a workshop, we will sit down and work through all of this with you. In the meantime, Lieutenant Crone can respond to the needs of Kena. And, um, and then I'll, we can have the workshop and I'll put this together again for you. And I'll find out from, uh, Shelley if I also need the SEL eight oh one, because that was also online. But I used the eight oh five because that's what you had used for your levy.
Yeah.
But I will follow up with Shelley to see. So if we can have a workshop, we want to work with you and we would have, be happy to get this done prior to Thanksgiving. And, uh, so that we can move forward. Part of the reason the levy, your levy didn't pass in May is that there wasn't, um, you didn't have many people out there knocking on doors and talking to people about it. We have a, a large number of people who are willing to go out and knock on doors, but we need time. We don't want to run this up, uh, run the clock down. So.
Right. And, and I completely understand that. And I'm perfectly good with a workshop. Absolutely.
Okay.
So, um, we can, we can do the workshop Monday, Monday afternoon. Does that work?
Cause we have a meeting in Harbor Fire.
Tuesday. I think that's Tuesday night.
Uh, Monday, the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Uh, no. Yes.
Yes, Monday, the twenty-fifth.
And what time did you say?
Uh, afternoon sometime.
Okay. Can we make it, uh, one thirty?
Yes.
That works?
Yep.
Yep. Monday, workshop, one thirty.
Got it.
Um, any doc, any documents, we need to get those to Natasha so they can be part of the public documents that we're going to be discussing or talking about. Um, and she's right there so you can make contact with her. I want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to, to, to view those as well.
Okay. And let me just ask Kena and Lieutenant Crone, just one, by then, would you, Kena, by one thirty, by, uh, one thirty on Monday, would you be able to communicate with Lieutenant Crone?
Absolutely. Um, if I can, well, being that Commissioner Trost verified the, uh, positions, I can work with current budget and calculate in these positions and come up, um, with the totals, um, including the budget assumptions that we have for the next few years as well, just to make sure that we're covering our bases. Um, I will absolutely have, I'll work on it tomorrow and through the weekend to make sure I can have everything together.
Okay.
Real, real quick, Kena, can you, um, in your, in your part of your calculations and stuff, I noticed that this was proposed as a, I believe a seven-year, um, law enforcement levy. Um, so can you also calculate in the, the annual cost for that seven-year period?
Tax.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments regarding the presentation? Jeremy? All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Kena. Thank you, Commissioner Trost.
All right. That will conclude, uh, presentation. So now we'll move forward to public comments. So before we do, uh, public comments, um, I want to say a couple of things that I've really tried to be as accommodating as I can when it comes to public comments. And, uh, recently we've, it's kind of evolved to a point where people are showing up with their friends, or filling out slips and saying, um, well, I don't want to talk, uh, my, my, my buddy can have my time, so he gets an extra three minutes. And I want to point out in rule number one, we have that comments will be limited to three minutes unless extended by the chair. And you may not donate time to others. So we're not gonna, we're not going to do that. And we're going to limit our public comment to three minutes. There is a timer on the television there to help guide you in management of your time. And I want to remind everybody that's watching at home, uh, the comments that people are making, we have not vetted, we have not verified. So please, as you listen to them, don't accept them as fact. Do your own verification. Vet them out yourself. And don't just, uh, don't just take a comment as being factual, because we have had some misinformation that has come out during, um, public comments. So, uh, the other thing that I want to point out is this is a board of commissioners meeting. It's not a town hall. So if you get up to the podium and you start asking questions and you expect a dialogue back and forth, that's not going to fit within a three-minute window. That's also not a, uh, it's also not a public comment. It's a questioning and answer period, which is actually a town hall. And if we need a town hall, I'd love to have one. I think we need to have more town halls. And, uh, as we turn the corner on the year, I want to start having some town halls again, especially at the beginning of the year in both North and South County. So Commissioner Lottollinger and Commissioner Trost, I, I, I expect that we'll be able to do that. Uh, we did it last year and I want to do it again this year. So now it is time for public comment. And, uh, first up tonight is Andre Bay. What's that?
I was going to comment on agenda item seven.
So you want to wait until agenda item seven?
That's what I was going to comment.
Okay. We can do that. Then Georgia Cockerham.
Uh, I appreciate the opportunity, but I'm going to pass.
Oh, all right. Bob?
Rob?
Rob, I'm sorry. Excuse me for that.
It's all right. Gentlemen, I'm here again concerning Social Security Bar.
Okay.
And, uh, the continued destruction of my property and natural resources by unsavory folks that are accessing my place through Social Security Bar. So I was just wondering if there's any plans, any gates, any hosts, any of that campground stuff going forward on the books or? Cause I'm at the point now, when it dries up, I'm going to import some riprap. I'm going to block the lower section of Social Security Bar to vehicle access. They come in here, they're, they're cutting my trees down, they're digging holes in my property, they're just destroying things. Uh, they're known to the state police, they're drug addicts. Last vehicle had a whole box, sharps container full of needles and all their stuff. And it's strewn all over my property. And they're, I mean, they're cutting down Alders this big just to get in there and destroy more property. So I'm kind of at my wit's end and was wondering if there was anything in the works regarding Social Security Bar as far as the county.
Yep. I, I don't know what the status is, Bob. Or Rob. I don't know what the status is right now. I didn't expect to discuss this tonight, so I'm, I don't know.
Well, that's all I got.
I've got, I, I got to tell you that I'm well aware of its problem and it's ongoing. It, it's difficult for, uh, we, we have a lot of things we'd like to do, but also you're stymied because you don't have any enforcement, for one thing.
Exactly.
Yeah. Neither, neither do we, neither do we. So if we can work through that problem, we can get, we can get, uh, sheriff's patrol to be out on there. Uh, then we can start taking some action. And so what you have to continue to do is call, call the sheriff and, uh, and ask for, uh, for a response.
Well, we can't get through. I called the state police, they show up.
I know. That's, yeah. That's been my experience as well.
Access it through my backyard and see what's going on.
Yeah. And I, I've been on his property. It's, it's, there's major destruction. It's, 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 it's reprehensible. And then we have, you know, there's additional vehicles being, being dropped off there. But, um, you know, I, I don't have any police power myself. I, I mean, all I can do is, is show up down there and, and look hostile. And that did work a little bit. Um, I ran a few people off doing that, but we really need, we need, we need participation from law enforcement to get this done. And so that's what we're, that's what we're working on. And I'm, I'm glad you showed up to ask.
Yeah. I wanted to see if there was anything going forward with the, uh, the campground.
I, I'm, I'm working, I'm working on that as well. We, we are moving forward with that with the city. That's, and we have, you know, that, I've been made, made aware of other issues going on there as well. But I've, you know, I've been, I've, we, we are in reduced staff ourselves, so we're, we're working toward it as, but I get it. I'm, I'm, I apologize for, I mean, I, I think I got a call from Fred here the other day and I think I was out, um, on, on Carverville Road doing the same thing that you were hoping I'd be able to do down there. I, but you know, it's, you have to go out and, and, and engage with these people. And sometimes it's dangerous and, and it's, yeah, it's, it's not good.
Down there without a weapon anymore.
Right.
Rob, I don't have, I don't have an answer to your question, but I'm going to find out.
Okay. I say something, like, you know, I won't go down there without a weapon. I don't think the neighbors will, because those people are, uh, they're on drugs and they're dangerous.
So just a second, Rob. So he said, I'm going to put up riprap. Can, can he do that? I mean, can, I mean, if it's his property.
If he can do it on his property, he can. Otherwise, we, so we have a lease with DSL, so we're in charge of that. But, but, um, I will, I will say that I'm not going to let him, um, break the law on Curry County land, but I'm not going to, I'm, I'm, if riprap in that appropriate area is appropriate, because when we've been down there, the, the issue is that the main part of the bar is, is free access. The lower part of the bar, people, it's a beautiful place. People want to go there. But the problem is that if you walk in, that's great. But when they get down there, they, people go in behind there and then they, they cut new roads onto private property, cut down trees, do extensive damage, dump incredible amounts of, of refuse and so forth. And, uh, and, uh, you know, the, the way that you control that is to control access. So we started with signage at the, at the top. And we're going to, we're going to move on with that. The, the, the reality is that, that if I had access to law enforcement that would respond, then I would install cameras there and we could start, we could start saying, once if we had cameras at the entrance, things would become much more manageable. And I, I, in fact, we have some cameras that we, we just go, we got some extra cameras. They might be workable for that. But that's going to be the, that's going to, that's going to be the, the step that, that gets there. But if it's just me looking at the cameras from my house, that's not going to do much good. So we're going to need, we're going to need, um, law enforcement to respond.
Rob, what's your address? Nine seven?
Nine eight six three zero, North Bank.
Nine eight six three zero. Okay.
Fred? I got that one right.
Well, I want to start out by, yes, I'm going to bitch about Social Security Bar, but I want to start out by saying thanks for Remo Rock. That looks good. You guys, I think, are you ahead of North Bank Road?
That.
Keeping the bums off there?
North Bank Road, that, that sheriff's office responded to that and they tagged the vehicles?
Doing pretty good too, but we got to push them a little quicker. Cause when they're there for a month.
Once they got, once they got.
This high when they leave.
Right. Once they got, once they got, once they got tagged, they moved.
Yeah. But we just got to keep pushing them. Cause you know, I know they're using restroom there and everything. Like I said, the one gal left, garbage, check half size. Your guys a little counselor more.
Yeah.
Well, I think it went over the edge. Somebody shoved it over.
I think somebody picked it up.
Keep up the good work on that. I'm not, you know. Now back to the North Bank, uh, just like Rob said. Got people going behind our house. Ted, thanks. Put up signs, five miles an hour. I made them put a little sign below it, no dust. A lot of people respect it. Once they get behind the house, they spin donuts, make dust. They think it's a free-for-all behind everybody's house. Uh, they're dumping deer carcasses on there. I sent Ted a picture.
Wow.
Rob or Ken, Teresa and I, we cleaned the river bar one day. Half of a trailer load brought out of there. We didn't get it cleaned before this rain because I couldn't get in there with my trailer. I bet you there's another half load we could have carried out. It just went to the ocean.
Yeah.
So that's why, I don't really want to block it. Cause I love fishermen and stuff. But if we can make it a walk-in behind our houses only, it'd end a lot of the problems. Ted's going to get a survey. I'd like to see what he come up with, because I feel my property goes to the river where it's at. So if it is, it's mine, I want to do something to stop it. You know, you guys don't blame us. If you're at your house at ten o'clock tonight, somebody spinning donuts behind it, what are you going to do? You go out there, there's condoms laying on the ground the next morning.
Well, the trees are cut down. They're literally cut down.
Yeah, they're cutting trees.
With a chainsaw?
Yeah, big.
No, with ax. Whatever they can find, hatchets. You know, that vehicle behind Rob's house we're talking about, she's seeing it. She thought somebody's living there. So I called Rob and then we all went down as a group and, cause we won't go in alone in some of those spots. They took the one spot and made, uh, trails through there, little handrails. It looked so cool back in there, but somebody's living there. Before we finally bumped them out. They go back there and they live. So I think that's basically at the hides, people's dumping deer back there. Like I said, the overnight people and trash. It, I was going to try to get here earlier this summer and pursue, but I want to give Ted time to find out on this survey. So I didn't want to push you guys.
I haven't.
You definitely get something done by spring.
I haven't looked at the results of that survey yet. I'll talk to Scott about it.
Call me.
Okay, I'll do that.
Need to get something done by spring. This winter, I think it'd be a dull roll back there. But by spring, we definitely got to work together.
Cause right now you probably can't, the high, the high water.
That's why I would have got the trailer cleaned up, the trash again, because I know it went to the ocean. But before you get to behind Stephen's storage or the big hole, and I kind of get through there. There are some pickups going through there and I don't know. One guy went through there and water come over his hood. I'm not taking my equipment behind the trash through there.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Cause isn't part of the problem, Ted, the city, the, the, the agreement with the city is we can't close that at night, right? Or?
The South Coast, the fishermen don't want the gate closed. And so, so, um, because they go in there and they act, they, they do takeouts there. So it's an important thing for them.
Yep.
So, um, you know, we're, we're working through that. That's, that's, it would be a, um, I mean, that's, that's, that's one alternative that, that could work. But at the same time, you know, a lot of this stuff happens during the day and during, during the year. Yeah. It's, it's just, you know, when people, when people are, when people know that they have no, no threat of, of.
Yeah, it's, it's just, you know, when people, when people are, when people know that they have no, no threat of, of being held to account, then they act pretty freely in some cases and that's what we're doing, that's what's happening, people drag their, their dead vehicles down there and leave them. And you know, again, as you said, all that stuff, I don't know, I take it kinda personally, I, I, I feel like that's my river. I, I feel like I grew up on it and, and, and I don't think that we oughta treat it like a toilet.
Right, and that's the, that's the big issue is the lack of accountability and enforcement there.
I can't sign five miles an hour, there's this motorcycle for six days going by the house every day.
Yeah.
You know, out there, five o'clock at night and you, I could hear him ripping behind my house, and I was having to be at the lower end. And I caught him, he was putting right at the bottom of my deal, letting the guy go through that little gully wash, and I yelled at him, he finally looked up and I went, when he left, he putted on across, but then soon as he got far enough away from me, pew! So, you know, the sign does work, but we need more.
Thank you, Fred.
Yep.
Okay, thanks for you guys' time, keep up the good work.
Thanks a lot.
And hopefully, we could get something done this by spring, Ted.
I will do my best.
And along this topic, I haven't verified this information, but I, I was told this, and again, this is not verified information, but I was told there was a truck and a, and a trailer, a camper on Miller Bar.
I think it's letting down the river.
And, yeah, and.
Give them a heads up and I think it's.
Yeah.
The trailer's gone.
The tra, I think they got the trailer, but the truck was disabled. Yeah, the truck was disabled, they couldn't get it in time for the water rise and then that's gonna end up in a, one of those deep holes there somewhere. Pro, probably, probably.
Thank you, I'll pass it on.
Well, we can get to that somehow and pull it out, can't we?
Well, it depends on where it ends up.
Yeah, I mean.
If it ends up at, it's at Miller, if it ends up at Icebox, yes, you can get it, ends up at Little Park, yes, you'd get it. There's a lot of stretches between there if it ends up, you're not gonna get to it.
No, you're.
Only way to get to the river.
Yeah.
There's some deep holes in there.
Yeah. I wish I would've seen it sooner, got it to Ted and tried to get something done with it. Cause what points me on that was, and it's, it's all hearsay, somebody said the OSP went up, ran the plates and found out they were stolen. Count, not the county, uh, Forest Service pulled the camp trailer out. I didn't think it's a pickup. I think, but I heard it's been up there for a month and a half.
Okay.
Yeah.
So why didn't somebody jump quicker?
Yeah.
Somebody should check in on that, cause now we just blew it to the river with the gas, I think it's a decent pickup, oil, all that's in there.
So it's a big Ford or something?
Uh, Dodge, I got a picture of it on my phone.
Man.
All right.
So, yeah.
That's it, thanks Fred. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
That's it for public comment until we get to number s.
I'll go ahead and get mine out of the way too long.
Okay, sure.
We're about there.
So Brad, last meeting, um, you sounded kinda disappointed during your commissioner updates about, um, everybody leaving. Um, the sheriff, lieutenant, the sheriff's supporters and no one here to speak on your agenda item seven that you continually put on here. So, I decided to stand here and see what you actually want.
I want the sheriff to come in and update the public on what's going on with public safety, that's what I want. I want the sheriff to come in and address the community about the status of public safety, what's going on with crime in our community? And, and how has the budget cuts impacted his ability to enforce the laws, protect the public, preserve the peace? I want the sheriff to come in and I want the sheriff to tell us what's going on, that's what I want.
Okay, how's this scary, it's cause you don't really, you know, say anything, you just.
Well, he, he, he knows that, we've, we've talked about.
Public doesn't know this.
Well, we've, we've, we've talked about that, I mean, it says public safety update, I can't give a public safety update, I don't run the sheriff's office, he does.
Well, you're putting it on the agenda without talking to the sheriff.
I have talked to him about this, we have it on every agenda, it's an opportunity for him to come in and tell the people, Andre, what's going on? To, to tell, to talk to Fred, to talk to Rob about what's going on at Social Security Bar, about what's happening up with all the complaints on the different rivers, with what's going on in the jail, what's going on, uh, there, there's so much to talk about. And, and I'm gonna put it on every agenda and give him an opportunity to do that, that's why it's there.
And you're notifying him for.
I've talked to him, I met with the sheriff, I met with him, I met with him a few weeks ago. We had a two and a half hour conversation, Andre, and I encouraged him, encouraged him to take certain actions, but he hadn't done any of it.
Well, can we just take it off the agenda until he agrees to come in?
No, no.
Why?
Because I wanna give him the opportunity for him to come in here and address the community. And I'm gonna provide, and I'm gonna continue to provide that opportunity for him.
I can't tell you what to put on the agenda, but if he's not agreeing to come in and speak, I don't understand why it's an agenda item. You put it on there expecting the sheriff to come in, you contact the sheriff, the meeting this day, item of seven, public, uh, safety, can you come in?
Andre, I get caught, Andre, I get complaints every day and I get calls regularly about crime in the community and I don't have the answers, cause I'm not the sheriff. And this is an opportunity for him to come in and publicly, publicly tell the community what's going on with crime in our community. What is the sheriff's department doing, how's the budget, what, how's the staffing? Uh, what, how many calls are we getting at night that are being, going unanswered? There's so much information that the people wanna hear and I'm gonna leave that agenda on there, so he can come in here whenever he wants and address that topic. That's why it's there.
Okay, good enough, I don't have your answers, but, uh, you know, only the sheriff can answer for himself.
Yep, and that's why it's there.
Just give me a second, twelve years ago, when I moved here, Sheriff Bishop stood here at this podium and it was the exact same stuff going on and the, uh, board was hounding him with the exact same answers and he stood here and said, if you worried about public safety, to arm yourself. Sheriff Ward has stood at this podium and said the exact same thing about public safety. So, public safety, we all know, is down, we don't have it. So, the answer for us is to arm ourselves. I'm not the only one standing in here armed tonight, you probably have one on your ankle, right?
No, I don't have one on my ankle.
Oh, somewhere. But anyways, I appreciate your time and, uh, you know, maybe the sheriff will see this and come in, maybe he won't.
That'd be great, and I'm gonna.
Bring the answers to you.
Well, I'm gonna keep providing the opportunity for him to come in.
Thanks for explaining it, I appreciate your time.
You betcha. All right, that concludes public comments, now we're on to consent agenda.
Move approval as amended?
And.
Maybe C, five C out of it, so A, B, D.
And I'll second it, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, Jay?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero. Next up is a discussion action item, uh, number six, it's a trailer purchased by the road department. And I've, I've got some, I've just got some concerns on the amount, Ted, I know, um, I know the road department needs their equipment, uh, and I, and I know that there's an, it's an important function to have the right equipment, but man, we don't have any money right now.
Well, I'm, I just wanna, this, this trailer's not, I can't ask people to be out using it, I mean, I can, it's, it's, the, the frame is bent, so, um, we do need another one, I, I mean, I can look around, I can, if you want me to look around, see if there might be something else out there. I, I had the road department do this research and they do a good job, and I can look for something used, I can see what we got there, there might be something, if you want me to take a look like that, I'll do that.
Yeah, the cost that's in the agenda, uh, package, that's a, that's for a brand new one, right?
Yeah, yeah, and the one that, the one that's bent was almost brand new when it got damaged.
Yeah.
We have an old one and so we really, we need it, we need a good serviceable one, I'll take a, I'll take a, uh, another look, come back at the next meeting.
Cause the new one is heavier, it says, it's, it's dirty or it's not gonna get bent.
Right, well, that's what we're, we, it's just the way that it was, it was, it was mishandled and, uh, and once the frames bent, you, you can't, you know, you don't wanna be.
Goes down the road.
Don't be sliding around on your excavator on there when you're trying to get on and off. I'll take a look and I'll, I'll bring something else back.
Okay, any further discussion, Jay?
No, no comments from me.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, uh, table that, take a look Ted and then, um, we'll review it again at a later time. All right, next up is number seven, public safety update, uh, I think Andre covered that pretty well. Uh, no one is here from the sheriff's office, so we will not address that, elected official updates we moved, so now it's on to commissioner update, John?
Director of County Operations.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it again.
It's all right, I, I actually got a couple of questions, so go ahead.
Go ahead, Ted.
It was just, cause I got a call from Mike Hewitt in the, uh, Portover Rotary, so the airport road burn?
Yeah.
Next week, is still scheduled or he just was checking?
I'll, I'll check into that, I, it's, uh, still awful early for that, but to be planning, but we'll, we'll, we'll see, as far as I know, the burn's on, on for it.
From Monday, yeah, Monday, Tuesday, so if you could let me know, I'll let him know, and he had two other, three other questions, he said.
I will say this, if this weekend is anything like the last couple of days, the road department might not be in shape to light anything on fire.
Gotcha.
Cause they, they, they're, uh, you know, they.
Hours.
So they started out, they started out this time, they, they went into this, this last event.
Big blow.
Um, and, and they had a bunch of stuff, but they were, they were real prepared, we're also, we're also booking everything as if it were a female emergency, which we should've been doing all these years, but they're, they're really getting it down, it's gonna help the accounting a lot, but they, they, they're out there, they're out there doing it, so I, I, if they can, they can, but if. Now, as I recall, it starts getting clear about Thursday. And those are pretty hard fires to light when it's, if it's, if we're having a major, major pour, so I'll, I'll check into it. All right.
And he also said, if you need extra equipment, he's got guys that have excavators that could help.
Well, I will say that, I will say that there are a lot of piles up there and if you had a, the more, once they're lit and you can work the piles, then all that stuff goes away.
Yep.
So that's something we can keep in mind, that's a good idea.
Trees, he said trees, you can't get redwoods, right now there's a moratorium on trees coming into Oregon.
We were also banned, we, Oregon Department of Forestry watched this meeting and said that we couldn't plant redwoods.
Yeah.
So, anyway, so we're gonna be plant, planting the local indigenous species and we'll go from there.
Last thing on his, uh, mind and the, and the Rotary Club was if they could, after it's all cleared off and, and burned, if they could do a trail, they would, they would make a trail through that area and kind of incorporate like the.
Well, we can talk about it, I mean, it would be, it'd be, yeah, the high school was involved in that, cause as I recall, our, our goal here is to, is to involve the high school at a pretty fundamental level of that, I know that, I know that as a kid growing up, you probably remember down there, the Millar Island Demonstration Forest down the south of President City? That was a great.
Beautiful.
And it taught you a lot about the woods too, you go out there and look at that, um, so.
Well, I, I think, um, um, we, in the proposed plan that was provided to us by the, the folks up in that area that we accepted, it included a trail, so I, I think it's already in the planning, it's already part of the plan, Commissioner Hurrell.
All right. Very good, thank you.
I don't really have anything else specific.
I'll try not to miss you again.
Thanks, thanks Brad, thanks Commissioner.
We will let you.
That's all right, I, I think Jay might wanna be the chair next year, so.
I don't know that it's about what he wants.
We'll see how that, we'll see how that works out, uh, all right, so nothing else Ted? No, okay, all right, commissioner update, John?
So, I just, I think you might've seen a, um, a, uh, press release on Beacon Broadband, um, received a grant of nineteen million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for expansion into areas north of Curry County and late, and some in Curry County for those hard to reach, um, addresses, so nineteen million, so there was sixty-six applicants for this grant, it's a BDP, broadband deployment program. And sixty-six people applied, twenty-two received money and Beacon Broadband was number one at nineteen, nineteen point five roughly million dollars. Huge for, um, Beacon Broadband and Kuz Curry Electric and deploying broadband throughout Kuz and Curry County and, uh, but all of Curry County would be done, so it's just a, a good thing.
Lot of money.
Yep.
Lot of money.
And, and kudos to a, uh, a Beacon employee who used to be a Curry County employee, Belle Early, cause she's our grant writer, so. Kudos to her. That's all I got, sir.
All right, Commissioner Trust?
No comment.
Really?
What? Wow, no, uh, no, no comment?
Can you let him go so we can move on and get home?
All right. Um, so I, I wanna comment, uh, I'm sure Commissioner-elect Hollinger is sitting right next to you, Jay, so I just wanna say thank you to him and Lynn Coker for putting on, uh, the stuff, the, the training and presentation we got last week at the workshop uh, regarding getting our natural resource, uh, resources back and, um, that was very well done. It's something that we are definitely going to move forward with, I'm confident in that, and, uh, man, those people know what they're doing, don't they?
That's amazing.
It, it is.
It was.
It is, and, uh, the, the whole state of Utah is doing it, um, it's with the new administration that's moved in, man, we have, we have a strong potential to actually get that done, so that's very hopeful and then we won't be talking about levies and other funding solutions, we'll get that timber money back. So, I just wanted to say thank you Lynn, thank you, uh, Patrick for coordinating all that, uh, making that happen and, um, I, um, that's a, definitely a light at the end of the tunnel. And then, uh, the last thing is, uh, that I'll leave with is the Holiday Bazaar this weekend at Fairgrounds. Uh, they got a bunch of vendors down there, so if anybody's looking for something to do, looking for some cool stuff, head down there and see Terry and, uh, Fairgrounds would appreciate it. That's all I have.
Real quick, I.
Oh, Jay does have something, oh, surprise, surprise.
Yeah, apologize, your comments spurred some ideas here, um, Commissioner-elect Hollinger did say he'd like to, um, to do a presentation, um, and are next meeting about that, um, that, that training that we went through. Um, I also attended, um, a roundtable discussion that was held, uh, up here in Florence on the wind energy, um, on the wind energy issues. And, um, I will say that, um, it was very discouraging, um, the fact that, uh, there was no invitation for representation from Kuz and Curry who would be, uh, directly, um, impacted offshore, um, to, to, to be a part of, um, or uh, part of that, um, one of the things is, uh, um, representatives from the, uh, Talladega Dany Nation would like to discuss potentially having a South Coast Regional Advisory Committee that we form ourselves, um, to, so that we can advocate, um, on our own behalf as opposed to, uh, individuals around the state who have different, um, priorities and agendas, um, advocating one way or the other that will directly impact us on multiple levels, so, um, I just wanted to sum it up as well.
All right, well, if nobody has anything else, then that will conclude our meeting.
Can I?
Oh, Kena, go ahead.
Can I add one thing, um, I, I just wanna confirm what I heard Lieutenant Groan say, because I, I mean, I just received his email, it included SARS and Marine, did he not say that it was to not include SARS and Marine? I just wanna clarify so I'm adding the right numbers together.
He's not here.
Okay.
It's, it's, I believe it was including Marine, um, but not the SAR sergeant, um, in SAR, it was the equipment for SAR. So, not the personnel.
These are all of it, it looks like, so, okay.
And then-
I will, go ahead.
Oh, one last thing, um, sorry, I'm full of one last things, uh, huge, um, shout out to the elections team, um, you know, pulling off another successful, um, election season, also short-staffed, uh, in doing so, and so, uh, giant kudos to Kelly and her team over there for getting that done.
Yep. Agreed.
All right.
Thanks, Jay.
No more last words.
Have a nice drive.
That's it, all right, we'll conclude this meeting, thank you, everyone, and the time is five eleven.